Yeah, showing up on where it says 6:59. It says join meeting. I just don't, I don't know how to get it. Full screen.
Well, that's fine. I'll do my best to look at that.
You just disappeared. It's gone off there. This afternoon, we had full screens and I'm not sure what they did to get it.
If we see the car pull back.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you're unmuted.
All right. Well, why don't we begin the meeting, the regular planning board meeting of Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, 7:00 PM. I'll ask that everybody rise. And good evening and welcome, everybody. First order of business here tonight is if there, to ask if there's any public comment and then the items not on the agenda. I'll start here in the room. If there's any public comment, can you raise your hand and recognize you? And seeing no public comment, I'll move to the Zoom platform. If there's anybody on Zoom that has a comment for the planning board or question, whatever, raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Seeing no comments, we'll move on. And the first item of business is the approval of the meeting minutes. First item would be the October 19th, 2022 minutes. I had a chance to read them. They seem fine to me. Is there anybody have comments on those? And does anybody want to make a motion? You just for clarity, you didn't have a grammatical correction. I think that will be incorporated. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Okay, moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Bye. Thank you. And then I was gonna acknowledge this, even though we didn't have a formal meeting on November 2nd, 2022, we are gonna make a formal record that the meeting was canceled. So Tammy, do you want a motion on that? Even though it's kind of just a, just a. Yeah, so can I have a motion on recognizing that the November 2nd, 2022 meeting was canceled? As identified here in our package, just for the record, so it's clear moving forward. Okay, moved. Second, second, all in favor, raise your hand. I thank you. New business. We're gonna move down to some new business that may actually be dealing with some older issues here. It looks like we're gonna go back and take a look at MSP 21002. This was a site. There's the cell tower in conjunction, the AT&amp;T cell tower in conjunction with the South River Water District, I believe. And so that was approved by a prior board over a year ago. And so they're back tonight to discuss with us a site plan amendment regarding, I think it has to do with the square footage fence that needed to be changed to accommodate more structurally sound setting for this, so.
Chris is here to take and explain everything to you. Chris, if you want.
I think that's somebody else.
I'm looking for AT&amp;T. Yeah, sure.
So first of all, thanks for having me. David Walsh for Smart Lake, representing AT&amp;T. The reason we're seeking an amendment is working with the water district and in the future plans with this tower, they really wanted to make it.
Future proof, we had to place a slightly larger tower into the compound. So originally, we had a 30 by 30 foot fence line that encompasses the tower and AT&amp;T's ground equipment. With the slightly larger tower, the only way you could fit the ground equipment in that compound is to have kitty corner everything. Didn't look that great, doesn't need any room for future growth. So what we're asking for is to just add 15 feet to the, to the northeast side of that fence line. So it's a 45 by 30 that allow us to put AT&amp;T's equipment in a straight linear line. That's what we want to do. So walk-in cabinet, backup generator, and then a propane tank for the fuel for that generator.
So are we correct in saying you're looking to add a fenced area 15 by 30, increasing fenced in area? That's clear. That's it. Okay. Tammy, is there anything you want to add? I mean, this is very, very straightforward. There is not much to really discuss here.
No, I was able to reach out. District contacted me first about it. He provided me a letter as being, because the town is, well, the water district owns the property. I wanted to make sure he was in agreement with it. He did provide me with a letter. I believe that one's in your packet. And so I went through and looked at everything and a lot of people will say it's not really significant, but it's different from the approved site plan that they did a year ago. And with it being the new board, I thought it would be a good experience to do both of those tonight so that you would be able to be familiar with the two projects that had been approved prior to your term. The only thing I would recommend that on the findings of facts that I do up for the new site plan is that we also include the previous conditions of approval so that they remain with this project.
Do any of the board members have any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the site plan amendment to MSP 21002 to incorporate the request to increase the fenced in area 15 by 30 and maintain and incorporate by reference the original conditions of approval. 21002 was approved by the prior board. So moved. Is there a second? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time, putting this together for us and, you know, got in the eyes and crossed the keys for us. So thank you for taking care of this.
Appreciate it easy.
Just to be clear from here, we're gonna go back and prepare findings of fact. And that will come back at one of our, hopefully, the next meeting.
Correct. With David's permission, it's all right. You know exactly what's gonna be in the findings of facts already. So you don't have to come back unless you want to. But if you so authorize me to represent you, to present the findings of facts.
Yes, that'd be great. I appreciate that.
So thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on. Let's see, site plan amendment, Hexagon Solar. The gentleman over here is here to present that similar to the first one, this particular project, MSP 20-010 was approved about a year, year and a half, quite some time ago by a prior board. And so similar, again, similar to the other one, they're here to request really some minor changes, but really to seek approval because they did have to make some minor changes out there in order to accommodate the actual buildup that happened. So.
Sure. Yeah, so I work for the company called Summer Ridge Energy. We actually acquired this project from Hexagon Energy about two years ago, right after the previous planning board group project. So context. Project's actually under construction right now. We made some minor changes that the state DEP had already approved. We didn't come back to the town thinking it was a minor change that wasn't needed, but we did get our building permit approved with those changes. So we started construction. But Tammy thought it might be good for us to come back and just get your, on the changes. They're relatively minor. What we have at our solar site is what we originally proposed is a single equipment pad where we'll put our bidding, both the switchgear, our inverters, our transformers. It's pretty typical for a solar project, but in doing the electrical design, after the planning board approved the project, we realized we needed another equipment pad because we were seeing significant voltage drops on the wiring, which is creating problems for our inverters. So we installed a new equipment pad, which is much closer to a lot of the modules. It's not in the front of the property, it's more in the middle of the property. It's not a very large equipment pad. It's like 10 feet by like three feet, relatively small. But we did have to extend the access road all the way to that equipment pad so that our, not just our construction team, our ongoing maintenance teams could get out there to access it if something comes up. And then in addition, the last change was we just moved the fence line a couple of feet so that we could fit that access road in there. Again, this is approved by the state DEP, so we didn't think it was a huge deal, but you know, I have to answer your question.
Okay. Tammy, anything you want to add? Again, similar to the first one, I'll keep repeating, very straightforward. But again, you know, make sure that what's being built out there is reflected appropriately on all the planes of purpose that we approved. So. Okay, so if there's nothing, no further comment, any board member have any questions, comments, or concerns? So, okay. Is there a motion then to approve the site plan amendment to MSP 20-010 incorporating the new equipment pad and the driveway extension, which allows for course on go maintenance and the justice into the fence line. And again, incorporate by reference the original conditions of approval with the the initial approval of the application. So it's been moved. Second, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Great. Thank you very much. You're, thank you. Appreciate you coming in again, taking the time to follow up with us. Emotion. And we can go over that if you need. So, all right, well, the next one here. Oh, sure. Sorry.
If you don't want to attend, also, just like I said, David, you already know what's gonna be on the findings of facts for the conditions because you've already got the original ones. If you so desire, I can represent you when they go to sign it at the next meeting. And then I can get you the original copies. I'm just kidding.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to old business. The first one that we're gonna bring up and I'm gonna ask for a tabling to, you know, December 7th. You know, the third-party review came in on Capernaum LLC 406 Main Street. And so we were attempting to move forward in an expeditious fashion. But it became clear that our attempt to possibly have a meeting next week really wasn't gonna come to fruition because we have a workshop next week and also the holiday. So therefore, at this point in time, I'm gonna ask for a tabling of MSP 22007 until December 7th. And that would allow us more time to review and consume the information that was given to us in the third-party review. Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved the second in all favor. Okay, motion is unanimous of those present. And so therefore, we get to MSP 22006, E.D. Street Properties, Great Hill Road. We'll call it four last subdivision. So just by way of background, at the last meeting, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, there were some questions related to whether or not a high-intensity soil survey was needed. It was brought up by a member of the audience that it would appear for your ordinance that you cannot waive that requirement. So we asked to send what did appear to be somewhat of a conflicting, you know, provision within the ordinance because it was really in two different areas. And to be clear, the, the planning board does have the authority to waive it. However, the waiver can't really be for something about convenience or, you know, trying to save some money. It needs to really be of a significant reason that would have to really overcome a series of tests in order to actually waive it. So we got that. We shared that information with the developers. And it was agreed, I'm assuming through, through Tammy, you shared that information. And they said at that time, let's table it, which led to the last meeting simply being canceled because that was the only item of business. And so it was shared and you folks agreed to do it. And now we're back here today. So where we are today is the high-intensity soil survey. One lot was unbuildable. And so we're One lot was unbuildable. And so we're going to hear from the gentleman tonight regarding believe you're combining lots one and two because one of those particular lots, I'm not sure, well, one does have the capability to be built on. And so we're going to have to go through this. I will say they've been great to work with and conversation with Tammy. So thank you for that. They're pretty much really in order here. Most every, everything you folks, you know, you've complied with every section of the ordinance, you've got that for us, you went through that. There are certain conditions, of course, we want to make sure there, such as the recording of the deeds, that kind of stuff, making sure that the piece of property is transferred to the land trust. And, you know, and a few others. So Tammy, if there's anything that you want to say, if now you want to wave it, I'll hand it over to this gentleman. You kind of give us an update on that.
Has been great to work with.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
It's easy when people work with Tammy and town staff to help us out.
At any time I've ever had a question, he's been able to get right back to me within a matter of a couple of hours for an answer. So that has been such a beneficial piece to the whole process.
So the only other thing I think before I hand it over to you, there the other, only other question regarding this particular subdivision was again, the high intensity, which was done. That was resolved fairly quickly was the water issue. Now, that's not really our issue. We can put the condition on to have public water. But how that works out between the developer and, you know, the water district, that's their issue.
Water district did say they had the capacity to handle the four lot subdivision. And I think in his letter, it says five lots subdivision.
But but my point is, as far as the expansion goes in the building of that, that's something you're going to have to do. That's between them and the water district. They just have to meet that condition of public water. So that's really not our issue, so to speak, to get into detail on that. They have to meet, they have to meet the condition of public water. How they do that is between them and the water district. So, you know, with that being said, if you want to kind of just go over quickly where where you are at this point in time and we'll open up for any questions or comments.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if everybody's fine with it, I'll sit here. You want me up?
Well, yeah, that's that's our process. All right. Just if you could speak up for those that are listening to this, we appreciate it. Thank you.
So I think everybody should have a copy of his report and I do have a couple extra eleven by seventeen.
You should have that.
Yeah. I'll keep it kind of short and sweet, just to save everybody's time. I feel like we've been over this project thoroughly. The plan revisions, we kept very simple. The design of the subdivision didn't change. We did combine lots one and lot two. It was a corner lot of lot one that had fair amount of somewhat poorly drained, so it's not considered wetland soils. But we we just barely missed the allowable tolerance of the thirty thousand square feet with the after the high intensity soil survey. So we, the simplest thing to do versus going through and reworking everything and doing new engineering and finding some way to piece together five lots, we just combined lots one and two that has ample coverage. If you look over on the soil based lot sizing chart on the left, the the second to bottom line is your soil based lot sizing total. So you have forty-two thousand and some change, sixty-two thousand, some change, ninety-six thousand, fifty-four thousand. That's after the calculations based per the ordinance. So all these lots meet. We have now satisfied every possible thing in the ordinance and those zoning ordinance subdivision owners fairly well. If there are any questions, I'll certainly entertain those. But we are looking to get board approval tonight.
Tammy, do you, do you, well, first, before I turn it over, do any board members have questions or comments? No, good. Tammy, anything you want to add?
No. If I would have, I I know I made copies of my planner memo and I swear.
They're on the desk back at the office. Get them tomorrow.
I do, but in there, I did, I did include some conditions and as Greg had said, they are basic conditions.
Well, I have a copy of the memo if you want.
I I have, no, we're good. And we'll go over those, but I just, so are you are you good? Because we'll go over that. Okay. So I want to go back because this gentleman, you know, I want to make sure that you're aware of what's going on because you came a little bit late. So I'll kind of go back and rehash a little bit.
I didn't think it was going to happen so early.
Yeah, no, no.
Audio on Zoom.
We were on Zoom and we couldn't get in.
Really? Well, the good news is you got down. So so let me take some time to go over kind of where we are. So at the last meeting, we kind of came back to two core issues. One was the water, the public water issue and having to kind of coordinate with the town in terms of the fire hydrant where that was going to go and a bond for anything that needed to be done within the public right of way. That's between you folks and the town. And I don't think there's a need for us to place a requirement or or a condition on that tonight. And I'll come back to that. But the other question was the high intensity soil survey. And so there was that conflict in the ordinances where it says, yes, you can waive it, though you can't. So we did look. And so thanks for bringing that up. We did go back, we checked with legal counsel. And the reality is, yes, we can. However, in order to waive it, you have to go through a certain test. It can't just be for a matter of convenience or cost savings. So in this particular circumstance, there was no way we could get over that. And so we informed the developer of this issue in that ultimately a high intensity soil survey is going to be required. We shared that information with them. We postponed the last meeting because they were the only item on the agenda. So they did go out and get that. And the result here is that was conducted.
No, I called in.
The five lots have become four because one.
Yeah, I can call in the video, the voice on the phone.
I just muted him.
Okay, thank you. And so that's where we ended up. And so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Thanks for bringing that up. We looked into it. And that was the result. So again, we go from essentially five lots down to four because they're combining lots one and two.
I would usually like to make one very simple comment is that we are not anti-development. We simply want to make sure that the land is able to support whatever goes in there. That was our concern from the beginning.
Yep. And so I didn't take it any other way. And so again, you brought something up that I thought was, and I think the other board members thought that was worthy of looking into, let's get that cleaned up. So that in the approval process, everything is is copacetic. And so again, like I said, we did look into it. There is a result we can, but it just this request and waiver would not meet that criteria or anything other than convenience or money. So that's where that ended up. So and they did the survey. We have that here. It's going to be public, it's public record as far as I'm concerned. So if you want to take a look at it, you can take a look at it. But it's pretty straightforward. And I think this gentleman here really explained very clearly at that point, there is not much left to talk about because they complied with every other provision in there, which really just gets down to tonight, the approval, which I, you know, I think we're prepared to do. I don't see any issues with Tammy, what I said earlier. Is the town, did, where does the town end on any requirement? As it pertains to, did they want to go a bond or a performance bond or any of the work on the water line? Or would that come up at a later point?
That would come up later with the water district.
Okay, so that's their issue, our requirement, if you put it in.
Yeah, and on the the plan, it says that it's going to be a proposed private way.
Yep.
So that doesn't have to follow with the roads. They do have an approved road entrance permit. Eric caught that one. And because I honestly believe usually in most towns, comes after it gets approved, that you take it to your director of public works. But he was able to get it. Mr. Lee went and got it. So that was one advantage to having that done that way is where you know the road is able to go in where they have it on the plans. So that's a Benny on that side.
So let's just kind of remind ourselves of what some of the conditions were that we had talked about. You know, I have the pleasure of reading from this. So I'll just kind of read them out, provide the recorded deed for the transfer to the Great Falls Land Trust of the six point seven two acre property. I don't think there's any disputes on that.
Five point seven.
Is it five point seven five?
Sorry, I'll fix that.
Five point seven.
We can reflect that in the findings of fact. And of course, as with most everything, you know, what it pertains to subdivisions, you do have to record that in the finding of fact at the registry of deeds. And so within thirty days of our approval. So do we have the plan that we can sign up on tonight?
You still have to sign the findings of.
Yeah, so we can do all that.
Yeah.
For when a plan that goes to registry, I don't like to fold it. And I also like to let sign it. Yeah. So that's just my digital signature on that one. So I'll get fresh copies.
And we want to make sure that there's confirmation that it in fact has been transferred to because to the, because you're transferring some property to one of the butters, right? It's been transferred. Okay. Okay, so that's been done. And then the other item that came up, and I'm going to think that this probably came up as part of the high intensity soil survey, looking at some of the theme stuff. Is the plan approval requiring that the principal structures in the subdivision will be constructed with their lowest floor, including the basement, at least one foot above the one hundred year flood elevation.
I think that has been changed, hasn't it?
No, that that came right out of the zoning ordinance. That that wording came right out of there. So.
You need to think about it?
No, I just because it's an interesting request because the the flood zone in that area in both flood maps, the accepted in the preliminary has an undetermined base flood elevation. So I don't have an elevation to technically meet unless I cross that line. It's a horizontal line placed on the map, distance from the river. So.
Right. So you'll be, you'll be more than two hundred and fifty feet for any.
We will, the houses will be outside the flood zone, but you can't give me an elevation. There is no elevation.
Right. So if, when you come in to get your building permit, all the whoever the person is coming to do the developing, putting the house in, whether it be the lease or a someone else to build it, they'll just have to say that it's outside of the two hundred and fifty foot setback from the river. So actually have to mark it at the time, even though, sorry.
Let's get this cleared up now.
When you come in for a building permit after you have a development like this, it's on water like that. You actually have to mark out your foundation and I have to measure it and make sure that you are truly two hundred and fifty feet from the high watermark. Everybody figures out the high watermark different, but we're a little bit more. That's it.
I mean, I can easily provide a foundation for different get on all four lots and stuff. If you need something more substantial than basically the ones.
So that doesn't, but, but, okay, so I get it. I understand what you're saying. Number four doesn't say that. Do you want to strike that?
Well, you can strike it or we can say just what Jenny said is that she will measure it or Eric provides a certification on the foundation. Or we'll measure either way.
So I'm going to.
So we'll just go with that one then, because we don't need to do foundations. These lots are huge.
Yeah. So I'll get with Jenny to find out exactly what we need to do.
Can you tell me, give me a sentence? What am I, what do I need to write down for the motion? So I'm clear.
When the applicant's by, apply for the building permit, code enforcement will be measuring the high watermark to the edge of all points of structures.
To be two hundred, I do it from the high watermark.
I mean, that sounds more like a COVID issue that would happen.
It is.
Not really sure at this point if that even needs to be a condition. It's not a condition.
And all these houses are.
Yeah, no, no, no. So we're going to strike that. So to be clear, you're going to record at the registry of deeds. Then you're going to record the finding of fact to make sure that this is done. Again, was it thirty days? And again, the transfer to the land trust and what you just confirmed, the transfer of the deed, the piece of property to the butter. And that's been done. So we'll be able to check that off.
Yeah.
So that being said, before we go forward and ask for motion, are there any other comments? Public, public water that's already here, listed here. So that's not, we don't, so we don't need to put it on. This is part of the plan, all right? We said to put it on, they they put it on. So that's second here. This is what's going to be ultimately recorded and and it's going to say somewhere on the public water.
It's note twenty-four, but I did just notice that we need to revise that meeting.
Which, yeah, yeah. So that that's where you're.
Got it.
All right. So most everything else we've talked about, talked about other than what we listed tonight. And some of the stuff we would all be here recording and this becomes the final document.
Mister Chair, you do have a hand raised on Zoom from Pat Robinson.
Okay, well, we could definitely, yeah, and I'll, I'll get to that.
It's just a quick, quick comment. You said Great Falls Land Trust. I want to make sure you've got the name right. Great Works Regional Land Trust.
Yeah, we got that. So we'll make sure that's finding a fact as well. So thank you, Pat. Any comments? So we just went over the the conditions of approval in addition to this map before us. And so do we have a motion to approve MSP twenty-two zero zero six?
So we're going with one, two, three. We're striking four.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, that's why I want to make sure we're here tonight. And so I don't think there is a condition regarding Jen will take care of that during the building permit process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's standard.
Yeah.
And so so that being said, we've been over this many times. We thank you for working with us on this. It's been a very good working relationship with Tammy. We appreciate that. Makes everybody's life easier when we work together on this. So again, is there a motion to approve major site plan twenty-two zero six? With the conditions that we talked about. Smooth, second, all in favor. Okay, well, passes, it's proved. Thank you very much. So then we'll develop a finding of fact and we'll prove that at the next meeting when you're going to go.
I just, you know, for the record, if something else, I haven't seen this map be so different than the public data. So that wasn't a skew of us trying to.
Fair enough. That's how things work.
We did that and I've done so.
Thank you.
So I'll get you.
Is there any? Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time and helping and bringing some stuff up. All right, there is no old business as far as I'm aware at this point, nothing hanging over our heads that we need to get through. Any comments from members? Okay, I don't have comments. So before I go to anybody on Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just clear of what's going on next week or next, our joint meeting. I just want to make sure we're on the same page today.
November twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth, so not next week.
Correct. It's the following.
Okay.
It's going to be to review the cannabis policy and the application and the town council license that they will provide if the applicant meets what they need. It will also be for the solar. The solar ordinance that you guys, that the planning board had done and sent up to the town council. I believe a couple of counselors had a couple of questions. They wanted to make sure that the planning board was in agreement with it. They just don't want to make the changes. They want to keep the planning board abreast of what's coming back to be part of the ordinance.
Okay, fair enough. So that was the twenty-ninth.
And it will start at six thirty.
Six thirty.
Yeah, with the town councils.
And that's here.
Correct.
Okay.
And there'll be somebody more proficient with the owl.
So just kind of a a follow up. I did look at the agenda from the council. I noticed that they did have this, the cannabis stuff up, but also they had some.
The ad hoc committee?
Yeah. So I want to ask what the the ad hoc committee, but also the training requirement that I wrote about. Do you have any information on that? I saw this.
Zach's already been.
Okay.
So this is the, this is similar. This is going to be strictly be Zoom. So it's pretty much the last one of the year on December thirteenth. It's a Tuesday. So if you want to go, you should email so I can get you registered for it. So.
So the question is, is this a want to go or is this a requirement? Or what was the outcome of that meeting? Or do we have a timeframe in which to get this done? So the question is, is this a want to go, or is this a requirement, or what was the outcome of that meeting, or do we have a timeframe at which to get this done?
They're they're trying to establish an ordinance, so that all the committee members attend at least one training. So that you know, I've attended these almost yearly, and every time I go, I pick up something new. Or something has changed at the state level that they didn't share with you. So even though you might get some repeated information, there's always some new information that whether it be on one side as an applicant or one side as the committee member, there's more information that can be used.
Okay, so it's not a, I just wanted, I want to make sure we have the correct information, so while not a requirement, it would be a good faith effort on our behalf to sign up and 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 I'm not debating it, I.
Yeah.
Training is fine, I just, I want to know what they're telling us we have to do.
I just didn't, I didn't have time to maybe catch up with them. But I will, I will let you know by the next meeting, whether or not it's, or if it's still on your discussion.
Okay.
I will find that out for you.
Okay. I don't think it's a bad idea.
Do we need to let you know by?
Um before the first of December. So it gives you a couple of weeks.
Okay, and what about that committee that we've been?
The ad hoc?
Yeah, talking about for a while.
You have, I, the chair, Mallory, will be one of the members, and then Jeff Minnigan will be the other member. The only thing I haven't found out yet, and I haven't had a chance to check the dawn, is to find out if either one of them is on the comp plan committee. Because, okay, then he can represent the comp plan as we start going through things, because I did our subsurface wastewater meeting today, uh stormwater. Found out that L D two thousand and three could potentially have some changes to it already.
That's right.
So I have already reached out to S N P D C on that to find out what the status of it is, and if that information is true, and where I can go to get it.
How would that have changed without the legislature being in session at this point, I mean, they went through the rulemaking process, didn't they?
And that's where it could have changed.
Oh, I thought it was done.
No, it it was not anywhere near done.
Okay.
So I'm trying to find out, there's three or four different questions that I've got written down back at the office to find out. You know, just basically from my own pure knowledge.
Okay, so they selected two people, and what would you suggest the next step be, just kind of setting up a first meeting in time?
Um.
Did they give you any information or no?
No.
Okay. So I'll, 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 I'll talk with you offline, because it's a separate issue, and Hershey, what are the other planning boards up? So uh I'll send her an email, get some information, and we'll coordinate that with you.
Yeah.
You can be there.
Yeah, because if we can eliminate a lead two thousand and three, I mean, that's a lot of load lifted.
Yeah.
The ordinance changes coming up, because you've got some big ones coming, and Christie's assisting me with all of like your erosion and sediment control, and you're also with. We're gonna try and do them both together, simply because there's no sense in doing one now and one in six months, getting ready for the next year's ordinance change. So we're gonna try and do it all at once, and you may have another meeting with the town councilors regarding that portion of it.
Okay. Anything else, or anything that's been uh anybody's mind? You know, they John or Todd's what, hey, where did this, whatever, end up? Okay, anything else from from staff? No, you're good, okay, anybody in the audience on Zoom, there's no one here in the room, so I'll go right to Zoom. If there's anybody on Zoom that has a comment or question. Here now. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all favor, great, we're adjourned, thank you, Thanksgiving, everybody.
Likewise.
Yeah, enjoy your.